Folks, it's 7 o'clock. We call the October 14th, 2020 meeting of the Warren County Planning Commission to Order. Our first item tonight is adoption of our agenda. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to adopt the October 29th.
September.
Yeah, September.
September 9th, yeah.
Yeah. To adopt September 9th.
Actually, it's October 14th, Agenda. I'm messing you up. You're on the minutes.
I'm thinking of a minute.
Yeah.
Let me try again.
Let's do it.
Make a motion to approve the October 14th, 2020, agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I was having our agendas adopted. Now, the approval of the regular meeting minutes of September 9, 2020. Is there a motion or corrections?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve September 9th meeting minutes as per then.
I'll take it then. Second. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Our minutes are approved. Fourth item tonight is public presentations. Public presentations are limited to issues that are not included on the meeting agenda. It's intended as an opportunity to the public to give input on relative planning issues, not intended as a question and answer period. If you have something you'd like to say, please come forward, state your name and address, and say what's on your mind. Seeing no one come forward, public presentations are closed. We have three public hearings tonight. The way that our rules for the public hearings are is after we read them and the background information is given, if they so desire, the applicant can come forward and present their give a presentation on what they want to do. After that, we'll have public input. Our thoughts on that is we please keep it concise, but please do say what's on your mind. It is a public hearing. It is not a pep rally, so we don't want any applause, cheers. At the same time, if you disagree with someone, we want you to be respectful. And the last one on that is if someone made the point that you're going to make, come forward and say that you agree with them. You don't need to make the point again. Okay? Our first public hearing is item 2020-0901. Kevin and Renee Royg and Daniel and Samantha Nobles, a request for a conditional use permit for a short-term tourist rental. Property is located at 2686 Panhandle Road, identified on tax map 35 as Lot 13C. Property is owned agricultural, located in the 4th Magisterial District. Mr. Wendling.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. This property was recently purchased this year by applicants who bought the property as a second home to use as part-time use for both sets of owners. They are requesting this permit to offset some of the costs of the property, such as mortgage, insurance, and maintenance. They do mention that they are experienced at this use. They have both long and short-term tourist rentals in Washington, DC, and they do understand the rental management for this type of use, as mentioned in their statement of justification. This property is located on Panhandle Road, which is a state road. It is gravel at that point of Panhandle Road. Panhandle Road is just partially paved up to a point. And it does have direct access to it. It is not located in a property owner's association or HOA. The future land use map does identify this agricultural areas for this type of use for a short-term tourist rental. This property also meets the required setbacks for adjacent single-family dwelling of 948 feet to the west. The required setback is a minimum of 100 feet. Staff recommends that the if the Planning Commission is to approve this application, the following conditions should be applied. The applicant shall comply with all Warren County Health Department regulations and requirements, and the maximum number of occupants shall not exceed six, as determined according to the department's operational permit for a three-bedroom dwelling. Number two, the applicant shall have a well-water tested annually for E. coli and alcoholiform bacteria, and a copy of results shall be submitted to the Planning and Health Departments by the end of the calendar year. We did receive an email today from one of the adjacent prop well, I guess, adjacent property owner's daughter. I've provided that to you on your desk and for your review. They are requesting that you review this for some certain concerns, specifically open fires. We've had in the past with some of the short-term tourist rentals, a condition placed on it that no open fire should take place. I've not put that on there, but that could be a recommendation to you if you feel that's necessary. And then I did meet with adjacent property owner, a gentleman down the road yesterday who had some concerns regarding the winter hazard conditions on Panhandle Road and out of town, out of city drivers driving on that road, not quite knowing best how to drive those kind of roads. But in any case, those were a couple of concerns that came up. This public hearing has been advertised. Adjacent property owners have been notified. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I believe the applicants are here. I hope. No? No? They said they were going to try and make it, so they live in DC and anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So are the applicants here?
I guess they didn't make it.
Having not seen one acknowledge that, I guess we'll move forward. So the public hearing is now open. The first name we have on our sign-up sheet is Charles Eschelman. Please come forward, state your name and address, and say what's on your mind, sir.
All right, take this off.
Sure. You're more than six feet from us, so.
All right, thank you. That's Charles Eschelman. I live at 2996 Panhandle Road, roughly about a half a mile before you would get to this residence. And I came to address what he talked about, especially from my perspective, since I'm not an adjoining landowner per se, is I've lived there where I live now for 35, going on 36 years. And in that time, I've seen a lot of what happens. Where I live particularly, there's a rather steep hill, and you drop down into a dip, and the road makes a sharp right-hand turn, it banks to the right, and then there's rather a long hill you climb. Numerous times through the time that I've lived there, I've had to rescue people off this hill, going down and throw salt and sand and ashes from a stove. A lot of people in the wintertime, they just don't understand. I've helped mostly neighbors, which is another issue. But the main thing is, is that when my concern is, is that the number of people coming to this as an Airbnb is I've stayed in Airbnbs, and all the ones I've stayed in had a landowner or a person who took care of that facility either next door or they lived in the one I was staying in. You know, helping neighbors, being a neighbor is something that I take pride in, and I believe I've done that all my life. You get to know your neighbors, you know who they are. There's the security issue of that as well. You know, when people come from the urban areas, they don't know where they're coming. They can't necessarily depend on the weather forecast, and I've seen the freezing rain and just a little bit of sleet and a little bit of snow, one inch of snow, you become a slid on this hill. I've had cars in my creek. At the bottom of the hill, I've seen the mailboxes torn out. Numerous times, people end up in the ditch, and soon as they hit the brakes, they slide over into the bottom. And what happens there is the applicants say that their contact is a cleaning company. When people are trying to get to this place or they're trying to get out, I don't see how they're going to help them much. I don't know how to solve this issue. It's just a concern of mine because then the neighbors, myself, become the ones taking care of the situations because I'm the one person they're going to come to. That's usually what happens. And usually it's a neighbor, and that's fine. I will allow, I think where the neighbor up on the right, they just moved, but I've had them stay at my house, parked their house, their car at my house numerous times, knowing Simmons who lives up the road from me has parked her car because she couldn't get home. But when you've got people on a rotating basis coming from the urban area down here, they don't know the area, they're not acquainted, they're not set up to what they're going to run into here, I just don't, I'm not sure that these people have thought through what they're what they're bringing somebody into, is what it amounts to. The cleaning company that they say is going to be the management, how are they going to help in this situation? What it comes down to is it's an unimproved road, it is very rural, the owners are 100 miles away, and they say they have management experience in this, but their rentals are in Washington, and they're in Washington, not here, they're 100 miles away and in a rural urban, you know, rural setting. So there's that issue. There's the off-site contact, which I mentioned. The thing about the neighbors, you know, all my life, we've known our neighbors, you know who they are, you know, you can depend on each other, but and I'll do anything to help my neighbors, but I don't feel, another way to say it, obligated to help when somebody is just buying a house to set up a business and they're bringing potentially people in every two, three, four nights or whatever, you know, it just becomes just people rotating in and out, and the one having to deal with that issue, at least where I live, is me. So that is, that's about all I have to say about it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next speaker is Wendy Weir.
The applicants just came in. If you wanted them to speak first.
Actually, I did. If you guys would want to address this, yeah, this, we'll go back to the public hearing, but as our typical procedure is they'll make the presentation if they so desire, then we'll have the public hearing, then they can.
Wendy want her, want to speak now?
If she wants to.
Yeah.
Please. Thank you so much.
Hi, good evening. Apologies for our tardiness. We are very grateful for the opportunity.
For our records, could you state your name and your address?
Sure. My name is Renee Royg.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Samantha Nobles.
And this is for the property 2686 Panhandle Road in Front Royal.
Yes, okay. Your address, though, where you live?
Oh, 424 21st Street, Washington, DC.
Okay.
I live at 3700 Banker Street, southeast Washington, DC.
Okay, thank you. That's just all the legal things we have to take care of.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, now please go ahead.
Yes, so we submitted our application and worked with Mr. Matt and really appreciate the opportunity. I heard some of the comments, and obviously we'll be able to hear more, but we're, we decided to buy the property at 2686 Panhandle Road as a mutual property between two families as a second home. Like our application says, we're going to use this application as an opportunity when we're not using the property and as the landowners of the property, just to help us pay for some of the expenses and share the property with friends, family, and any guests that are interested in it. We submitted, obviously, some of our paperwork and ideas. I want to say that we don't think of this as a business, as more of an opportunity for us to enjoy Front Royal, to get to know Front Royal. We've lived at the property for the past two and a half months and have really enjoyed the community and the proximity to Washington, DC. I don't know if any of you have visited Washington, DC lately, but it is not as spacious or as beautiful as Front Royal is right now. So we've enjoyed that with our children, to go out there and have really enjoyed the house and the just the community of the downtown Front Royal. Yeah, I don't think of it as a business as much as just an opportunity to help us offset some of the cost as the landowners of the property. Are there any specific questions that we can answer in this presentation?
At this time, though.
Okay, okay.
The public hearing will resume, and then you'll have a chance for a rebuttal.
Okay, excellent.
Then from there, any questions we have will.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
If I may, I just wanted to also make a comment. COVID times have been super weird. We're both from the south, more like Panhandle and Texas and Louisiana, and so naturally, when I move to a new place, the first thing I want to do is meet my neighbors and get to know them and bring them cookies or something like that. We have had, it's been a strange time to buy a home in a new area, not feeling comfortable going to our neighbor's house to introduce ourselves like we would normally want to do. So I actually don't know how all of this works because this is my first hearing, but I do want to say if there are any neighbors present, we desire to know you and have a relationship with you and foster a relationship with you. We very much think of this as a personal residence. It's not our full-time residence.
Excuse me, excuse me, you'll have to address, you'll have to address.
Oh, okay. I just want to say that that's our intent, is to have a great relationship with our neighbors and know them and look out for them and invest in the community as well. So I, it does burn my ears a little bit to hear that we are outsiders because we feel like we are now insiders who pay taxes and who want to invest in the community, and we love the home. And I would live there full-time if I could, but anyways, so I just wanted to say that it's, we love it, and it's not just a business to us, so I want to be clear about that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now Wendy Weir.
Wendy Weir, and I'm staying at 2436 Panhandle Road, Front Royal, Virginia, and I have been staying there since I sold them the house on July 15. As she said, they did tell me that they were buying the house jointly for them to enjoy it. I had told them when I showed them the house that I would not sell to anybody that would turn it into an Airbnb. They said they liked the house so much that they were keeping it for themselves. Six weeks later, they're applying for a conditional use permit. They're saying that they want their friends and family to stay there. I don't know why you need a conditional use permit for short-term leasing to have your friends and family stay there. I don't believe anything that comes out of their mouth. Our community is a well-established community. I've been there over 30 years. My neighbors have been there 20 to 30 years. We have been a family. We've shared holidays together. Our children grew up together. If I need anything, if there is an emergency, I know where I can go, and they feel the same way with me. We are a protected community. We look out for each other. If there's cars driving slow down the Panhandle Road, if we suspicious cars, we're calling each other. If there's wildlife, bears traveling, we're calling each other. Having strangers live next to me, I've got the building lot that adjoins this property. When my daughter gets out of the Navy in July, our plan was to build on that property. I have been clearing the land by myself since January, trying to get it ready. When I got hit with this, I would be very vulnerable. My daughter and I living in a house beside a transient hotel with unknown people on a weekly basis. They trespass, it's up to me to get them off my land or call the police department. Maybe they come, maybe they don't, depending on what else is going on in town. It's up to me to monitor. If they get in trouble, they lose their deposit. So what? Doesn't, it doesn't benefit me any at all. I'm vulnerable. They're putting me in a dangerous situation. I think it's unfair to jeopardize our safety and well-being because the applicants wish to offset their mortgage, insurance, and maintenance by adding this property to their profit-making commercial business. It is a commercial business. It is for profit. It is open to the public, and we suffer the consequences. They knew the mortgage costs before they even viewed the property. It was on Zillow. Everybody knew what it was going to cost them to live there. As far as insurance goes, homeowner's insurance, $900 a year. I don't know what Airbnb insurance costs, but $900 a year for homeowner's insurance. This permit would allow 24/7 business, whether they plan to take advantage of it or not. How are they going to screen their tenants? I know it's written, and it's been said to me, that this permit can be revoked for in compliance. However, we all know that's not going to happen. It'll take an act of Congress to get it pulled. They are an out-of-state host. It says they are part-time managers with a cleaning company as an emergency contact. What's the response time on that cleaning company? There is no cell phone reception on Panhandle Road at this location. The landline is CenturyLink, if they have a landline. I had a landline. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. If it rains, it doesn't. If the wind blows too hard, it doesn't. When I had spoken with Mr. Wendling about the increased traffic on the one-and-a-half-lane gravel road on Panhandle, which is where this property is located, he said that there wasn't much that could be done about that because he is not the police. We are not the police. I'm not the police either, but I got to deal with it. I got to deal with being run off the road by out-of-state tags. It's happened a lot this year. Yes, there's been a lot of traffic from out-of-state, carrying canoes, kayaks, bicycles, and they will run you off the road. I'm not the police either. And asking me and my neighbors to monitor, to make sure that they are in compliance, that their tenants are in compliance with how many persons stay there, with what they're doing, it's not our responsibility, and we should not be put in that position. Septic is a sand filter system. It is the very first gravity-fed sand filter system installed in Warren County. It does not have a liner. They figured out later that they needed to have a liner in them. It needs to be monitored weekly. It takes chlorine tablets, and it takes de-chlorine tablets. It's got groundwater that runs through it. Needs to be monitored weekly. The groundwater will soak up the, it'll turn the chlorine tablets into a mush that'll either sit there or to wash out. They have tenants come in, they're using the restrooms, there's no chlorine tablets, there's no de-chlorine tablets. I have paperwork on the regulations for monitoring that system. It is a weekly monitor. They need to keep a log of how many chlorine tablets they put in there, when, what time. Same with the de-chlorine tablets. Panhandle Road should not be open to economic development and tourism. We do not want it. That's why we still live there. We do not want it. And that's all I have for right now.
Thank you so much. Our third person signed up tonight, Rudy Waltnar.
Good evening. My name is Rudy Waltnar. I live at 2777 Panhandle Road. It's a property that's across the street from the property that's being discussed this evening. Wendy and Chuck both expressed a lot of my viewpoints that I wanted to talk about tonight concerning the traffic on the road. Another main concern is trespassing, since my property is between the property in question and the mountain, so to get to the mountain, you have to trespass on my property or my neighbor's property. And the noise. You know, we're down in a little hollow there. We have the mountain on one side, and we have a big hill on the other side of the road. So any noise generated in a hollow, it does carry. It's not like an open area out in the valley where the noise can dissipate. It's actually, you know, carries down through that hollow, and I've had times where, I'm sorry, Wendy, but when she's been out of town and her kids were home by their own, by themselves, they did have some wild parties, and I could hear it over my property. And according to Warren County GIS, I'm 975 feet away from that house. So that's all I have to say. I just, you know, wanted to add on to the comments that Wendy and Chuck had posted.
Thank you. Thank you. John Priski, address is 2815 Panhandle Road. I'm sorry, I'm.
Oh, Puglisi. That's what everybody does.
Okay, yep.
Good evening, everybody. Just wanted to say that.
Please state your name and address.
John Puglisi.
Okay, thank you, John. Sorry.
I live at 2815 Panhandle Road. My young family and I, we moved there three months ago, and you know, I was really concerned, I am really concerned upon hearing this. I have young children, and a major concern of mine is trespassing and sex offenders, whether they're registered or not. Am I going to be alerted if they rent to one of these people? You know, my main concern is my children, and my wife, too. She's a, she's a young, pretty woman, and I have seven young children. And in addition to the concerns of my neighbors, that's my main concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rosie Rollins currently staying at 2467 Panhandle Road. A log house that I built in 1985. I was the only house on that road, so all these other people are interlopers. I had the whole place to myself, backs up to the national forest, was lovely. But anyway, so how's it, I mean, you know, you can't stop progress. But I had similar situation with another property that I was involved with, and we had people renting the Airbnb and running up to my property and shooting deer. So you've got hunters that want to use Airbnbs, and that's like, okay, that's not quite right for you to come out and shoot my deer, you know? But, you know, I don't know whether any of you folks have ever driven out Panhandle Road, but the hill right in front of this property that we're talking about is a single lane straight up, and can't tell you how many times I've been going up that hill with my horse trailer, praying that I didn't meet anybody, because you cannot meet anybody on that hill. And that's the hill I think that Chuck is referring to about having to rescue people. We get stuck on that hill, and it's, the road is not meant for tourism of any kind. It's for us people who live out there, who enjoy the peace and quiet and tranquility of the mountain. And increased traffic would not be good, especially for people that don't know the area. And anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Don Simmons. I live at 2467 Panhandle Road. Say Rosie's house, I'm an interloper. I own horses. I have dogs that I let out, no leash law out there in the country. My horses might get out, which they have been known to do, although I'm working on that every day with all the downed trees I have out there because I live in the woods. My dogs might go visiting. I can go to people, my neighbors and such, and say, this is my horses, this is what they look like, these are my dogs, these are their tags, call me, which they've done recently with one of the dogs. If they go to this Airbnb, you don't know what's going to happen, you know? You know, you don't know if those people are going to take this dog and take it home with them, they're going to shoot him. You don't know why they're there. They could be out hunting. They could be out hunting and come across a horse that looks like a deer, although he's brown and white, you know, brown and black. He's still going to look like a deer movement, that kind of thing. I worry about my animals being run over in the road by, like, the unfamiliar people. The hill that Chuck talked about is right past his house. It's on a curve. And as you go up, straight up, there are all these little potholes where people have gone up, spun their wheels, now you've got all these bumps. So the way to get up that road is to take the outside lane and go in the opposite lane and go up. Smoother doesn't tear that road up. These people aren't going to know that. They're going to end up in a gully. That section of woods drops off quite a bit as you get a little farther up the hill. This is what Chuck talked about with his neighbor having to stop at his house, was me, at least a couple of times. Go up, ice, you come back down. You say, I'm parking at Chuck's house and walking home. These people aren't going to know, you know, ice is going to affect them that way, because they're not going to be familiar with the road going up. You know, I bought a home in the country to get away from, I lived in Fairfax in Vienna. And I bought a home out here. I have to move to Front Royal because I can't afford anything in Vienna. And I want to have horses, I want to have land. Got to go this far out to be able to afford anything. So I bought out here, and I have friends, and this little sense of community, like we say. I rely on Chuck. Wendy calls me, says, someone just came up your driveway. It's okay, it's a friend, you know. There's a deer in your backyard, Wendy, take your trash in. Most of the other things that people talked about, I couldn't say it again. Just know that I am opposed to having this turned into there, just for the fact that I won't know who's there. We won't know when it's rented or when it isn't. We won't know who's actually renting it, how many people they're there, what their purpose is. Are they coming out to spend a weekend in the country to relax? Or are they coming out to have a party? Or go hunting? And not know the surrounding area, and where my property ends and where the national forest begins? Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn and Nancy Lang. Anyone else want to come before us? Didn't sign up? For our records, when you get here, please state your name and address and have at it.
My name is Chelsea Hackney. I live at 3455 Panhandle Road. And Wendy's property and the property that we're speaking of at the moment is right between my place and Chuck's place. And it's, I've seen during the summer, the litter, and I've grown up here my entire life, I love this place, but I'm not a native to Panhandle Road like a lot of people are. I've seen generations grow up on that road. I've seen, I was best friends with Wendy's daughter growing up, and that's when I first met that road. I've met Chuck through another friend. And, but I've been there for a long time, and I've seen what happens in the summer and in the fall. People go up and down that road, and they just, they litter so much, they throw beer cans out. They're wanting to party, they're not taking things seriously, they're drinking and driving. And that's the main reason people want to come up here. I know, I know some people are good people, and they just want to relax, but when it's a larger house like that, and you get a big group of people, I think they're wanting to do a little bit more than relax. And I just hate seeing the, it's not a progression, it's a degradation of how that road's been treated over the past few years. I also own a river property on Pala Drive, and that's right off of Panhandle, off of Sager. And we have a gentleman whose family, born and raised in the area, but he lives in DC, and all of his friends are also from the DC area, Richmond, things like that. Every weekend, they're up there, and they just, they don't know how to act, they don't know how to treat the river right. They're throwing, again, beer cans in the river, styrofoam coolers, they're setting off fireworks at 3:00 in the morning. They recently ran into a mailbox that was constructed out of part of a condo that was really cool. They hit it on their way out at 2:00 in the morning, one morning, did a lot of damage. And there's also certain things I don't know how to put this correctly, but just recently on 4th of July, I had my nine-year-old niece down at the river with me, and his group was down there. And there were a few more progressive people, and they were transgender and female to male, and they were going topless. And so there were, there was a lot of nudity, where a nine-year-old didn't need to be exposed to that. And I don't know, Panhandle's a community, and like everyone has said before, everybody knows each other. Everybody likes that sense of community. If there's potholes, people come out, take their tractors, do the box grading on the road, and fix it up. And we know who's on that road, and I don't, I just don't like the idea of having people coming in and out and not knowing who's on that road. And I'll even, Chuck, back in 2018, when we got all that rain, I remember it was flooded right in front of that hill. And it was also flooded right in front of the road to turn into my river property. And unless you know that road, you're, you're not going to get through that very easily. So it's, it's going to take help from other people, and that's, I don't know, it's depending a lot on us. It's putting a lot, it's putting a load on us. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else?
Can I go again?
I only go once.
I actually have stuff for you to add to your packet that I forgot to hand to you. So if Mr. Wendling wants to, they didn't distribute it to you, be fine as long as you have it. And then if you have any questions, you can give me your--
We'll, we make comments, we'll ask if we have any.
Most people like to hear them talk.
Anyone else?
At least they have to talk.
Anyone else? That public hearing is now closed, and now we have an opportunity for the applicants
You can do that, yeah.
And can we turn to our neighbors?
When you do, we can't hear the microphone.
Okay. I want to say that I appreciate so much hearing from our neighbors and our communities. Some of the things that were brought up are concerns that I either share or I would share. Especially when you said young children. I have a two-year-old and a one-year-old, and Mrs. Nobles has a one-year-old. So we would share those same concerns for sex offenders or strange people, and especially trespassing. And we want to be incredibly respectful of our neighbors and the boundary lines. We intend and have drawn a map, a clear map of the property, and that outlines our boundary lines specifically. Obviously, I think you guys know from the plat that we border the national forest and Panhandle Road, and then have two neighbors on either side, one of them being Ms. Weir. And we really care to delineate especially that property line between us and Ms. Weir, especially as she intends to build on the property, and to want to make sure that each party feels safe. I think that all those concerns, we don't want that to happen. We don't want someone wandering on someone else's land, whether it's our family member, our own child, or someone staying on our property. Another thing that I wanted to address especially was a concern for hunting. We don't intend to allow firearms on our property. That's not something that we're interested in offering to anyone. We also, I'm trying to say, I don't know how people have addressed it in the past, the concern for traffic or more cars on the road. That seemed like it was a concern for a lot of people. And I don't know what that looks like, because in my mind, when we travel up and down the road, it would be the same as someone visiting our home. We don't, there will not be, people will not be allowed to have parties. It will be the maximum number of people staying there. Now, we can have parties when it's our time. I'm just kidding. We intend, we've actually intended to have some friends over for a fall fest, so to do a fire and things like that, so, on our property. But we wouldn't allow guests to have parties or firearms, so I did want to address that. Again, we're really glad to hear from our neighbors and hope that we get to know some of you better and more, especially in light of knowing that we intend to have this property long-term, regardless if we can rent it or not. If the planning commission decides not to offer us the opportunity to rent our land, we intend to have that home on Panhandle. We, again, really love the property, love what that allows our family to do, to take a break from Washington DC. So we intend to be here and hope we get to know and meet some of you more, especially what Samantha said, under the circumstances of COVID have been a little strange. Are there any other specific items that we need to address for the committee, or what, how does this work, or what's helpful?
This is just an opportunity to address the, you know, the concerns--
Yes, yes.
From there, anything that comes up, we'll mention whenever we, you know, have our own discussions.
Yeah. I appreciate it, and I'm sorry, I don't know everyone's names or didn't memorize them, but the consideration for the noise, I thought that was an interesting one and one that I haven't observed. But you're right, being in the hollow, you, I think that you could hear things. So I think the no parties is effective for that, and hopefully helps tamper that. I know that we can't, you know, we can do our due diligence on screening applicants and people that come on the property, but truly, we would intend for people to use it the way we use it, which is a retreat, not a party destination or something that would cause distress or anything for our neighbors. We really do care about our neighbors, whether they're in DC or in Front Royal. We, yeah, I think that some of the things probably brought up by Mrs. or Ms. Weir should be addressed neighbor to neighbor and maybe aren't applicable for the application as far as like the validity of our word and what we have said with our mouth. I think that that could be addressed neighbor to neighbor and not necessarily in the planning commission. But I really do appreciate this opportunity and hope that we can find a path forward and use our land for the way that we would like to use our land, but also to be neighborly and considerate of the people around us. Good evening. Thank you very much.
I don't, I don't have much to add, other than I echo Renee's sentiment about, regardless of how this all plays out, it doesn't change the fact that we will own the home and that we will have neighbors. And I know that you all have history together that we don't have, and I know that we are stepping into an already established community, but I hope that regardless of what happens, that we can also have a relationship with our neighbors and that we can text and communicate. And if you are concerned, you know, we're happy to give our emails and our phone numbers to any one of you, and would love to talk. We'd even love to have a glass of wine on the porch together. I mean, that's just how we see ourselves in Panhandle. So, yeah, regardless of how this goes, we would like to have a relationship with our neighbors. So, yeah, that's all I have to say.
I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, public input is closed. We'll discuss among ourselves. What I kept hearing a lot is the thing of comparing this to a business, a hotel, and things like this. Years ago, the Virginia General Assembly said that short-term tourist rentals are not a business. So also, too, there are certain rights that homeowners have. If they go for a long-term rental, like 30 days or longer, that's a byright use, and none of us would even be here. And you also have to look at the thing there, too. If it is a short-term rental, you do get a bad neighbor coming in, it's a weekend. If it's a long-term rental, you got a bad neighbor, they're there for a while.
In history on short-term tourist rentals, like you said, our state legislator has deemed this not a commercial property, because the people that have been there for a short time, there are people living there long-term. On some of our other short-term tourist rentals, we've seen some properties that were in horrible condition, outsours of the neighborhood, and people were actually able to buy those using their self-sum, really improve the neighborhood, and, you know, the house is not kept in good standards and neatness and so on and so forth. It's not a marketable product. So in certain applications, we've seen this actually helped the neighborhood. From a dilapidated, you know, old abandoned structure, you know, that's not being maintained, trash, junk cars, and, you know, things like that. So there's some pluses and minuses. I have very mixed emotions about this one. I live very close, too. The other strong point for me as a planner was a piece of property, profit is not a dirty word. A farmer literally lives off of his land. I don't, I don't think that's wrong in any moral standard. I also feel that if it's your property, and you can do something on your property that doesn't directly affect your neighbors or cost them in property value, you should absolutely have that right. But also, sometimes they don't fit every neighborhood. So that's, you know, my landright side say you should be able to do what you want to on your property. But then, I get that the traffic thing, most, I mean, that thing's not going to rent 365 days a year. But if you, a full-time person living there, you know, it's usually at least two cars, sometimes three, ten on the size of family. From our studies and things I've monitored, short-term tourist rental is actually less traffic than a full-time resident. But there's also the dynamic, it's somebody new to the road once a week. But it's not necessarily more traffic. But, you know, so I get that, too. So there is a balance here. And I do have some mixed emotions about it, and I'd like to hear anybody else have any comment.
Yeah, no, I'm kind of on the fence, too.
Always have mixed emotions about, about the Airbnbs. Only, only like Mr. Henry here. I do think that people should be able to do things with their own property. I do think it has to be the right property. It has to be the right place. It has to have the right setting for it. I don't like the idea sometimes that people may buy property just for that, but I know that, again, you can do that. I mean, that's your right to do that. But I have also seen in the past where people with big amounts of property have to pay tremendous tax. And so an Airbnb rental would help them on the tax, which would keep them from splitting their land up and building houses. So there's a lot of different situations where they're good, you know. I try to look at, at the good points as much as I can.
All right.
That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else got anything?
Question about the Septic system. Matt, would that actually meet current code?
Yeah, I have one of those.
It is--
It would have had to be--
It would have had to been approved by the health department. It would have had to have been approved.
Get that, please.
Okay, now the maintenance part of it, that's up to the individual homeowner. I mean, once it's approved and installed, and Mr. Henry might be able to allude to this a little bit more. But it's up to the property owner to dutifully maintain that. Mr. Henry, do you have any additional?
I'll start by saying I have a master septic system installer. I mean, I do install a lot in the area. If it's not a surface discharge, if it is a research sand filter with sanitation, we usually use UV like now to get away from the chemicals for the maintenance. But if it does require chlorine, de-chlor, weekly is strong, but yes, somebody does need to check that. And if they're doing a maintenance agreement, by all means, maybe that could be added as a condition. They do have, that is a little bit of an odd system. It is an older design. We don't put those in under that circumstance anymore. For pre-treatment, we would use like an Invan tax or a monterback or something like that. Those systems, when they kept up, they do work. So it will meet, it would meet the, you know, as long as they don't exceed the number of occupants, it is plenty safe to use for a short-term turf rental. But it does require some maintenance. You lose the disinfection. If the, literally when the, after the water's treated and it's re-thirded through the same filter, the bacteria move to organics. But the water's clear when it leaves, but it's very full of bacteria. So you add, it runs to a coronation chamber. That kills all the bacteria. The bacteria, the coronation is an oxidizer, so it pulls all the oxygen out of the water, which is not good for the environment. So then it runs to another chamber with de-coronation and that actually pulls the chlorine chemical back out of the water. And then it's usually, that also helps put some oxygen back in. And then in the surface discharge system, it would be aeration steps added to add the air back to it. So as far as the special conditions, it might not be a bad idea to have whoever their professional maintenance company is, if they're getting a professional to do it.
It's required by the health department to have a engineering company.
Once a year.
Twice a year is what I have to do.
Well, it depends on your system. It's either once or twice, depending on if it's TL2 or TL3 and which one it is. But it's not weekly maintenance and those tablets will not go six months at a time. So I think that would be a fair condition to add that whoever's doing the professional maintenance, that de-chlor, de-chlor cadence be monitored. And then if this was to be considered any farther while we're talking about conditions, I would have to absolutely have no open air fires and no fireworks.
Yeah, I realize that, Dan.
Yeah.
Let me ask you, since you know more about these systems than I do. With that, so if the system is not used for a month, they rent it to, you know, two couples and they come in and use it without you putting the tablets in or checking the tablets. Well, one, would a tablet survive a month without any use?
Typically, if there's no flow, the chamber is designed for flow to run across the tablet.
Correct.
So if the system is set dormant, the tablet consumption would be either, if there's still in the water, so there may be a little bit of minimal deterioration. But if you're not using any water, they almost use no tablets. But then, you know, as the flow increases, the tablets will dissolve and they'll use them up and they got to put them back in. That's why the weekly thing would be, you know, they're going to come in their house once a week after somebody, after every rental, somebody's going to have to come in and clean and do all this stuff on the maintenance schedule. I think that'd be a fair consideration to add.
Yeah, the way we would enforce that is we would just get some sort of a receipt from the property owner that it was, it was being done. I mean, we couldn't obviously go down there. But they would have to provide us some sort of a documentation, you know, for their records that it was done. Yeah, that's kind of a tough one. As Mr. Henry said, typically it's once a year, it might be twice a year that the health department requires that. And I'm not sure how much they actually enforce that. But we can, we can, you know, work something out as far as a receipt, an invoice, something that they could provide to us and that would do that. Just a couple notes. You mentioned no, they shall have no fireworks and they shall have no open air fires. Do you also, we are concerned about firearms and shooting and hunting on the property. Now, we can't address the national park or the, the national forests. And I'll just mention also kind of a little bit of history of conditional use permits for these short-term tourist rentals in this area. A few years ago, we actually had three permits approved at the River Oak subdivision, which is just beyond this area. It is a gated subdivision. One of those, the property owner actually built the house adjacent to theirs and they rent that adjacent house. The other property owner actually lives in the house and travels, but he comes back to the house. So, you know, we get, you know, that's how he rents that. And then the other property owner lived in the house, moved across country, rented it for a short time and now he's back. I don't believe he's continuing the short-term tourist rental. And as you may know, we recently, the board recently did deny a short-term tourist rental application on Panhandle Valley Retreat Road, listing some of the reasons, I believe, relating to the community and privacy and issues of security. So just to bring that up. But we made notes about the, those items you would like as conditions. And if you were to move this forward, it would be those amended items. If there's any additional items, we can add them now if you choose to move this forward to the board.
We'll remind everyone sitting here on this that our vote tonight is only a recommendation to the board of supervisors. They will take this up and have the final say. Does anyone have anything else? If not, is anyone ready for a motion?
I do got one question of the applicant. Do they have a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman?
They probably, well, probably should so that we can get it on the record on their answer. I have some myself, don't worry about it.
Yes, you have indicated that your family will be using the property as well. In timeframe, what are you, how many weeks a year do you use it? And how many weeks are you anticipating on renting it?
That's a good question. I think for how long the pandemic lasts is going to determine that for us because we're working from home in about 1,200 square feet with two kids. So as much as we can get out of DC as possible, we will utilize it a lot. But we also have a life in DC where we attend church on Sundays and I hope that I can, my kids can do soccer and things like that. So it won't be every weekend. I can't give you a firm answer, but it'll be intermittent depending on, again, what the pandemic looks like and what our family life looks like. But it is two different families and so it's not, we won't always be using it at the same time. So that is something to consider as well. But it's not just one family using it in our spare time or free weekends. It's also another family. Sorry, that's not a more firm answer.
Well, that gives me some kind of anxiety. If you told me, you know, half to half, the pandemic's actually going to change your time there. But you, you're not coming up for Christmas and Thanksgiving in the other 50 weeks a year.
Well, I think Thanksgiving would be nice.
Well, you should be. I'd be spending more than two weeks a year at the property.
Yeah, and I think our proximity makes it. I mean, so it's an hour and a half drive from our house. So we have packed the kids up on a Friday night and come and spent the weekend. It's really nice.
Somebody else got a question for that?
Matt, only other question. Would you ever consider maybe trying to get a neighbor to also be involved?
As far as?
As far as managing and stuff?
Oh, I'd be definitely open to that. I don't, I guess I haven't, I don't know of anyone that does that or would be willing to do that. But if that were something, I would, that would be ideal, yes.
I've just seen that work a little better sometimes.
Yeah, yeah.
You throw some money at the neighbor and it makes them feel a little bit more involved and they kind of know, you know.
And not only that, you have like an ear to the ground.
I'm just curious, you know, your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I would love that, I think we can say.
I would also like to comment on, I mean, the reason that we bought the home is not because we don't want to be there. So I just want to make, I mean, we appreciate the serene forest views. We, I mean, the reason we bought is because we couldn't find a perfect place for us to stay. And so we love it. So we want to be there. And we also echo Renee's sentiments that we also would love to have a relationship with our neighbors, not a hostile, kind of cold-shoulder relationship with our neighbors. So I hope that, I hope that this could be one of those situations where we can have a neighbor who keeps, you know, lets us in on what they see or things like that.
Thank you. Do you have any more questions?
I don't. Thank you so much. Okay, anything else?
Mr. Chairman, just one more item. There's supplemental regulations that require the posting of property lines of the property, which the property owner will have to do as part of a supplemental regulation, okay? And there are ways to do that without being super intrusive or anything. The other thing is, is the property management plan will require contact information of both the property owners and any property managers that they retain for the property. So if anything, they could provide their management plan to local neighbors who could, you know, basically call them or call their property managers. If there's an issue, they can provide, they will provide it to the county for review. And if we need to, we can provide it to the, to the police, to the sheriff's department if that's necessary. So the primary thing is, if there is an issue, the sheriff's department is not only going to be the one who's going to get the call, but the property owner and the manager of the short-term tourist rental. So I just wanted to put that out there. That's with all the short-term tourist rentals that have been approved.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone ready for a motion?
I can make the motion.
Yes, sir, thank you.
The stuff that we add, do I have to, if I do it for approval, do I have to list each of those?
I've listed them. I've got, if you want to.
Well, for clarity of the record, if you could list the additional recommendations or the conditions that the commission has discussed and wants to be added. I think that would be best practice.
So I move the planning commission forward this application to the board of supervisors with a recommendation to approve the conditional use permit request of Karen, Irene, Roger and Daniel and Samantha Noble with the additional conditions that were discussed at the meeting. Mr. Whitney will be adding for a short-term first rental. And the current conditions is recommended outstanding.
Is there a second?
No second.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify the saying. I oppose. As have it, it'll be forwarded on to the board of supervisors. It'll probably be taken up, but in about a month. Our second public hearing tonight. Z20200901 Shelley Cook. I'll hold up until.
Mr. Chairman, we're actually, Shelley, Ms. Cook was not allowed, was not able to make the meeting due to some unforeseen circumstances. So we are conferencing her in. And I just was giving Joe a chance to do that. And I just wanted you to know.
All right.
So he's getting that set up real quick.
Should I go ahead and introduce?
Sure, go ahead, please.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Z20200901 Shelley Cook. Request amend Chapter 180 of Warren County Code Zoning Ordinance to amend the definition of rural events facility, to add rural events facility as a use allowed by conditional use permit in agricultural zoning district and to amend the supplementary regulations for rural events facilities. Mr. Petty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will state that, I'm sorry for sitting over here when I'm manning the phone, that when you do speak, that you speak clearly into your microphone because Ms. Cook is on the phone and she's listening via speaker. So she'll have to hear through our sound system here. But thank you again. This text amendment is proposed to 18055.2 and in addition up to 18021D to the Warren County zoning ordinance. And the applicant is requesting this text amendment to allow rural event facility use by conditional use permit in the agricultural zoning district. This is in existing use in the rural residential zoning district currently. And we have amended the supplemental regulations as included in your packet. I won't read all of the supplemental regulations currently, but I just wanted to make note that we didn't add anything. We amended it by taking away sections that may already be included in the zoning ordinance. So it was repetitive in nature. And we also removed things such as the amount of people that would be allowed at these rural event facilities or contact information for managers. That would be, since it is a conditional use permit, those would be included in the conditions per these case by case. Again, this applicant does have another item for public hearing this evening for the actual conditional use permit if this is approved. However, this text amendment would be applied to Warren County, Chapter 180, and it would encompass all of Warren County, not just this specific property that you will hear later. So just remember that this is for all of Warren County. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them. This has been properly advertised. Again, the applicant is on the phone. If we have any questions to apply the, they apply for this.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Cook, do you have anything you wish to add to those comments?
No, I just appreciate you all, you know, allowing me to do this by finding Karen and Joe working so hard to help me be here. I was exposed to COVID, so I couldn't be out at the meeting. I've never missed a meeting when I was an applicant for something. So I appreciate you all accommodating me. And I, just as I spoke in the previous meeting, I really think that this will be, it's a needed, the event center is needed in Warren County. And I think that in the rural community, it will show the beautification of what Warren County offers.
Okay, thank you. And may I first, be the first to say, thank you for staying at home if you've been exposed to COVID.
Yeah, right.
All right, we'll now open the public hearing. We don't have a sign-up sheet with anyone on there. But if anyone wants to speak for or against this item, please step to the microphone, identify yourself and see what's on your mind. Okay, this is, this is not for the use itself. This is the county-wide zoning.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Use itself.
Okay, so, anyone else? See no one come forward, public hearing is closed.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I think this is a good idea. We've had several applications over the years. And for whatever reason, maybe they didn't fit their neighborhood and they were denied, maybe justifiably so. But there are places in the county where I know this will work. I've attended wedding venues in Luray, different places in Page, other counties. We have none, we don't even have the ordinance for it. So I really, you know, support at least the footprint. Granted, this is not a by right ordinance. When you put this in, I mean, you have an event center, you still have to come for your special use permit and get your conditions and, you know, apply that away and you could be denied. So, and when this came through before, it was some confusion on that with previous planning commissions. So I'd just like to remind everybody, this, this doesn't grant Ms. Cook's conditional use permit, but it is a footwork for these type of event places in other parts of the county. of the county. The, you know, in the other places, it may or may not qualify, but I would like to see this footprint adopt.
Is there a motion? Does that affect that?
Absolutely. Mr. Chairman, finding that the proposed zoning ordinance amendment is appropriate for public necessity, convenience, general welfare, good zoning practice, I move that the planning commission forward the proposed amendment to the board of supervisors with the recommendation for approval.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. All right. Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Ayes have it. This will be passed on to the board of supervisors. Our third and final public hearing tonight is Item 2020 0902, Shelley Cook, request for conditional use permit for a rural events facility. Property is located on Lee Burke Road in the Fort Magisterial District, is zoned agricultural, identified on the tax map 27 as parcel 21. Ms. Logan?
So, this is the request for the actual conditional use permit for a rural events facility. The applicant, Ms. Cook, would like to use this property to build a rural events facility. The use of the facility would range from weddings to business venues. The property is currently, well, it's approximately 41 acres, located off of Lee Burke Road in the Fort Magisterial District. The applicant will need to comply with all the supplemental regulations in the county's ordinance for this use, including all of the other county ordinances for noise and lighting and such. The tax map number is 27 lot 21, and it's zoned agricultural, as I mentioned. The request was sent to VDOT, Health Department, Building Inspections, Fire and Rescue, and the Sheriff's Office. Everything we've received is in your packet. In my staff report, I go down through the, the supplemental regulations that were just approved for the rural events facility. And staff has recommended, if the planning commission does approve of this request, that the following conditions be applied. The applicant shall comply with all Warren County Health Department, VDOT, Building Inspections, and Warren County Fire and Rescue regulations and requirements. The parking area shall be in a location approved by the planning department. The property shall be in compliance with the county's noise ordinance and Warren County Code Section 123. All events will be between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m. The only access to the property for the events facility shall be off of Lee Burke Road with an approved VDOT entrance. That is part of the county's supplemental regulations, that the events facility has to be off of a state-maintained road. And any buildings constructed on the property for the rural events facility shall be cohesive with the agricultural and rural nature of the surrounding area and their appearance. Ms. Cook had talked about building a barn-like building, and we just wanted to make sure that, that, that would fit in with this, with the rural nature of the area. And we didn't want it to, to be, you know, something other than what would fit in with the agricultural nature of the area. So, a barn-like structure would be nice in that area for that. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. All adjoining property owners were notified, and the public hearing was properly advertised.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Cook, do you have anything else to add to that?
No, I feel Taryn expressed everything that I'm proposing, unless you have any specific questions for me.
Okay. Not at this point, but the public hearing is now open. We do have a sign-up sheet on this. First one is Eddie von Gontard.
He meant to sign up from, yeah, he was here for the Ag Forestal District.
Okay. And I guess Beatrice von Gontard also.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Wayne and Susan Chatfield Taylor.
That was for the Ag District, too.
I must have the wrong sheet.
We might have the wrong sheet.
Rural events facility.
Okay, nevermind.
Richard Marsala. Here comes somebody. We're getting there now.
Hello, I'm Richard Marsala, 360 Martin Road, Front Royal. Just wanted to let everybody know, I am of the same mind of you guys. I think if you own property, you should be able to do what you want on it. So, I'm not opposed to this facility, so to speak. I do want to let you know, I, we moved here six years ago for the peace and tranquility of this environment. So, you've already touched on what I was going to say, as far as noise level, times, lighting is a, for me, I backed up to the property across the road. So, lighting is a concern, that maybe it should be downward pointing, facing away from Martin Road, so that it's not shining in my front window. That's a concern. There is a concern for me of possible trespassing over Martin Road into my area as well. So, I don't know if there will be a, a more secure fence line put in right now. There's a gate that actually opens from her property to Martin Road that maybe can be sealed off, just to say, hey, this is your end of line. Don't walk past this point. The other thing that I would like to address would be, I'd like to know where exactly it's going to be on the property, as far as if it's going to be closer to Martin Road or closer to Lee Burke. Where it's going to be placed exactly. Because obviously, the closer to Martin, the more chance of something happening at our level of the property. You've already addressed that I feel that it should fit into the community, look like it belonged there forever. So, I'm appreciative of that. That was my other concern. So, to kind of recap, noise level is a concern, because we bought the house for the peace. Lights in the parking lot away from Martin Road, if possible, and downlit. And then, I would just like, at some point, to find out where the facility itself is going to be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lynn Morrison.
And Shelley, can you hear the public speaker?
Mm-mm. Mm-mm. Have no idea what he said, other than he wanted to know the location.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Morrison.
Speak a little bit better.
And I'm a resident of South River Estates, and I live at 694 Dorn Road. My family and my husband's family has been a part of Front Royal since 1969. My husband's father bought the first lot in South River Estates. We have enjoyed all the peace and tranquility of South River Estates. We love the river, and just recently, in February, my husband and I have made Dorn Road, our residents there now are permanent residents. We are a little concerned about what's going to be happening with this event center, but like has been stated before, we are for people to be able to use their property. And our concern, I wrote down a few of them, sanitation, light noise, again. We went, moved out there for, to be able to see the sky, and we know what it's like to live near soccer fields in Fairfax, and it does impact your ability to have that peaceful tranquility. We have people who come in, in the summer, and they make a lot of noise, light off fireworks, light off weapons, and we want to make sure that that's not happening. Our other big concern is, we don't really know what this facility is. We haven't been given a lot of information about it. Again, where it's going to be located on the property, how it's going to impact Martin Road, Lee Burke Road, the ingress and egress on the road, the additional traffic coming in, alcohol, and the max capacity. Is this going to be something like the Barnes at Wolf Trap, or is it going to be something like the Nissan? Really, I don't know how many people are going to be allowed to access this event center. And again, this is something that a lot of the people who live in that neighborhood are just questioning. I don't necessarily get a feeling, I am the president of the association, and I'm getting the feeling that a lot of people aren't against it, so much as that they want information. So, we would like some of these questions to be addressed before the board would make a motion. So, and that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. David and Nita Sudlow, are you here for this, or are you here for your next?
Your work for the next.
Okay. Just, just want to be clear. That's all of everyone who has signed up, but is there anyone else wishing to speak to this issue?
Hello. Chuck Bowers, 315 Lee Burke. My wife and I have been there since '05. We overlook the property being discussed. We're kind of curious about where they're going to put it as well. We lived in Falkir County before this.
Oh, good Lord.
At a time when Oasis Vineyard was trying to do, to increase their project out there. They wanted more people. They wanted more hours, more, more music and so forth. They wanted amplified. Where we lived, there, excuse me, was a, was a hollow, pretty much, running through the mountain, and the sound traveled up. Where I am now, that sound's going to come up like, about like you and I were speaking normally. I'm just concerned, are we talking acoustical music, or are we talking amplified music? And in Falkir, it was 10 o'clock, they had, everything had to be shut down, and by 11, gone. If they're not, they're not shutting down till 11, and that never worked, by the way. It was always midnight or later before they finished cleaning everything up. Will there be someone from county periodically making sure, or are we going to have to, as neighbors, take that in to make phone calls? I don't know how that system works. Everything else Shelley's been doing out there is fine. I think it's kind of a neat idea, but I am a little concerned because that's why we're there. We've got a good view of the mountain skyline drive and peace and quiet. Pretty nice neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going, going. Public hearing is closed. Ms. Cook, do you wish to address any of these comments that have been brought up?
I have to tell you guys, I'm in a distinct disadvantage, because I cannot hear what they are saying. I heard bits and pieces of it, and the only thing that I can, was something about a location, seemed to be if it was going to be facing Martin Road, which it's not. I don't have the exact location on the property. The engineers have to decide where that's going to be, but it will not access Martin Road, and it won't be tucked up against Martin Road. It'll be towards the front of the property, closer to where the Loving Arms is, that I built. I'm not exactly sure where, as I said, because the engineering has to be done. If you guys want to enlighten me to anything else, I will happily address it.
So, one of the comments was about the noise, kind of a better understanding of what type of music will be there, occupancy load. There was a question, again, about Martin Road, and if there is any intent to use it, and if there could also be the possibility to block that access off for anybody who may wander from the venue. I think you've already addressed the actual site location itself, and the aesthetics has, has been placed in the conditions. And I believe that, and the lighting, if there is any lighting, will be addressed, how that may be done. And then, it was also commented about currently the condition state 11:00 p.m., adhering to that, or even possibility bringing that to 10:00. Those were some of the general comments. Is there anything else?
Yeah, a couple more I got was like maximum capacity, if alcohol will be served, and some concerns about sanitation.
Each, okay, so, as you guys know, this isn't, isn't an ag property, and I actually had the property perked for, to do a vineyard, which is by right. And I still haven't stopped that I will have, be producing my own wine. So, I can't say, each person at the venue would have to obtain their own ABC license, for a temporary license. If they get that, that won't be something that the venue offers. It will be something that's up to each individual owner. As far as the hours, 11 o'clock is pretty standard, and I worked closely with Taryn on that, to come up with that hour, and I thought that it would accommodate most venues. I ran Loving Arms Assistant Living for almost 19 years, and I worked closely with my neighbors and never had any complaints. And we had venues. I know you're thinking it's a senior center, but we had bands, we had different things, we had evening events. I try to take everything with my neighbors into consideration, and it is a 43-acre parcel, so I will try to make sure that the lighting is accommodating. I'm not, I don't want to block off my access to Martin Road, because I own a lot on Martin Road right now. And it's got a gate, so I don't, it's going to be, the venue center is going to be in the front. It's not going to be in the rear. And as far as the capacity, that will go according to the building that we have. But I'm thinking somewhere between 2:00 and 2:50, it would be the highest if it was a wedding venue. And I would do this in conjunction with agricultural, because it, like I said, I still am planning to plant some vines. So, it's going to be a joint venture. And I'm working with the Department of Agriculture on that.
All right. Thank you so much. With that, I'll close it for our discussion.
Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, I need to make a disclaimer.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I have not done any work on this property, or have any financial interest in this venue or anything, but I should mention that I have done work for Mrs. Cook on other properties, namely, the other subdivision. I don't think it's affecting, I also live in this area, but I don't think it's affecting my vote because I have no financial benefit from there.
Okay.
So, but I just felt like I should, that should be disclosed.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Cook, last month, we talked about the Shenandoah Senior Living, and asked you to get comments from the management there about your venue. There was nothing in the packet provided to that point.
I'm very sorry. I can't hear him, Joe.
He was asking, last month, there were comments regarding contacting the Loving Arms facility. He didn't see anything within the packet stating any comments from them. Have you had any discussions with them, or have they submitted anything?
They are an off-site owner, so there's not a local owner here to discuss it with. They are owned by Summit Senior Living out of California.
They will have a manager.
And I had had talks with some of their liaisons, and they, you know, the residents get excited to see anybody. I ran that facility, like I said, for a long time. The only thing that that's going to do for them is be the highlight of their day, if they can watch a wedding, or if they can see people. They love interaction.
My concern is, my mother's actually in a memory unit. They turn the lights off at 9:00, literally turn the lights off. They have to be in their rooms. And if you've got something going on till 11 o'clock that has some noise to it, they are, other than a few of the homes on the backside, on Lee Burke, they're, they're right there.
Well, I, I can understand what you're saying. I'm a registered nurse, and I ran that facility, as I said, for many, many years. I would be, this is going to be back I would be, this is going to be back over on the hill. We have people that have parties regularly. We have a gentleman that has a shooting range right up the road, and so there is always noise that we've had to combat with this unit. And they do have a unit, but they don't have a Alzheimer's unit in that facility. They take care of Alzheimer's patients, but they don't have a lost unit.
Okay.
But we would be courteous of them, and we would try to keep the facility so that it's not right in their backyard. It's going to be over on the hill to the right, is my best guess.
Okay, but you're, you're not willing to get comments from the local manager?
I did talk to the local manager, sir, but she's just an employee. And the only thing that she said was they didn't have a problem with it. It's the administrator, and she's actually my neighbor. She lives right beside me. I, that's another thing that's very important for everybody to understand, is I live right here in front of Loving Arms. So, I'm not going to do anything that is going to disrupt the peace. I have a 90-year-old father. So it's not like I'm going to be an off-site owner that is in Fairfax while this is being done on my farm. I'm actually going to be here and interactive with the process.
Ms. Cook, we had three people come up to speak on the issue, and all three of them, the question was, where on the property exactly will this be located? I realize that engineers are not cheap, and I would be hesitant to spend money myself unless I knew this would go forward, but would there be any way that maybe you could provide a sketch somehow to show just a general layout of where this place actually will be on the land?
The problem that I have is they have to base it upon the parking and availability, and making sure the parking is accommodating, and then on top of that, making sure of VDOT, and where we're going to, how we're going to bring the entrance in. But to the best of my ability, there is a house at 137 Lee Burke, and it's going to be back on that edge of the property. I don't know if Joe and them have anything there that they can show you. There's a pond, and then there is the little house at 137. My plan is, is to bring it kind of right to the left of that.
Yep, these people haven't seen it, so I'll get that.
So that it's kind of in the, in behind that little house. There's about 20 acres back there.
Okay.
Because I have another five-acre parcel in addition to this.
Okay, then. Thank you.
And that would keep it away from the senior center, keep it away from Martin Road, and it shouldn't disrupt anybody up on Lee Burke Road either, because it's in the lower level.
All right. Absolutely.
Ms. Cook, is, I also have some questions. When you were here before, you had mentioned that you kind of wanted to do this, and maybe potential vineyard for some land conservation. Just saying, this doesn't go through or something. Can this property be subdivided, you know, similar to the other subdivisions? I mean, could, could you get some lots in here and deal this out as well?
I'm sorry, I...
So, Mr. Henry was asking, at the last meeting, you've talked about having a winery in addition to. He said if this venture does not work out, do you have subdivision rights for this parcel?
You know what, Hugh, I, the way that it is currently, the only thing I can do with this parcel is four, four 10s, I believe, and then Taryn can speak better to it. I think there is, if I do one of those things, if I went to have it rezoned to R1, I could have it rezoned to R1, and then if that got rezoned, because it borders R1, then I could do it that way, and subdivide it. So I do have options with the property. It's not what I want to do, but if they, if I can't do anything else, I can't afford to keep this property. I, I understand what everybody's saying, and I've tried to find something that would be the least, if I do a vineyard, which is more by right, and I have, I'm allowed to have a barn, a tasting barn, then you're going to have people in and out for that, and there's going to be events. But I thought, well, an event center would be better, because it's just like on, you know, sporadically on the weekends and things like that, so it would be more accommodating to. If I can't do that, I can't keep paying the taxes. I have to look at what I can do to preserve my land, but still afford to pay for everything. It would be beautiful if we could just sit and look at land. Unfortunately, I can't afford that, so I'm trying to, to work with everybody to do something that would allow me to do that. My backup plan is to just go ahead and do a vineyard, and then have an event center with that.
Thank you.
Okay. If I got anything else?
Comment-wise, between us, no questions, surely?
Yes.
I am familiar with the property, as I do, I live, I live within a few miles of it, and I've got some friends and neighbors that, that I visit in the area. Because of the other by-right subdivisions and a few things, there is some high density very close to this. Some of it is Ms. Cook's, some of it is not. I think it would be a great opportunity to not bust this up into X number of houses, whether it be four, or 10, or 20, or whatever, you know, whatever she can get. I think that when this comes, if, if we can move this forward, if we move this forward, maybe this is a question for staff, will planning get to have any input on where these building locations go, or will it be strictly between the engineers?
Unless there's a specific condition on the permit, no.
Okay.
I mean, you would have to include a condition that it be in a particular area. But otherwise, we, we could not say it has to go on a certain spot, unless you attach a condition to the permit.
I understand the area she's talking about, and I'm, I'm very comfortable with it, but I just wished I could produce it to the public at some point. But it's enough room there. I mean, it, you know, and I, I think it's a great way to preserve it. You know, knowing, knowing a little bit about a property where I've drove around and visited some of my friends and stuff that live fairly close here, so, that's all I have.
If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning commission forward this application to the Board of Supervisors with the recommendation to approve the conditional use permit request of Shelley Cook for a rural event center facility with the conditions as recommended by staff.
Is there a second?
No second, dude.
Okay. All right. All those in favor, please signify with a saying aye. Oppose, no. Ayes have it, and it'll be forwarded on to the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you again, Ms. Cook.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate everything.
That's it for our public hearings. We now have two authorizations to advertise. First one?
So...
Item 2020-1001, David Anita Sudlow.
Yes.
Request for conditional use permit for a chapel. Property is located at 64355 Strasburg Road, identified on Tax Map 9 as Lot 48 C1. Property is owned agricultural, located in the Fork Magisterial District. Mr. Wendley?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting this conditional use permit for a church to be used as a chapel for worship, services, and Bible study for interdenominational services. They've requested to have a maximum of 49 occupants at any one time in attendance. The applicant's currently used...
I think that's what they did.
Excuse me.
Excuse us, folks. Excuse us. Excuse us, please.
Please.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
We didn't realize, we're sorry.
Sorry, man.
That's okay. That's right. I'll just start where I kind of left off. The applicant's currently uses the accessory structure as a garage and chapel for family devotional and religious study. It is approximately 1,728 square feet. They do plan to make some minor renovations to the existing structure in order to use it as a chapel facility, and, which includes upgrades to the existing septic system and a handicapped accessible restroom. The applicant has, was denied a sewage disposal system permit by the Health Department due to this zoning requirement for a conditional use permit from the county for this land use. I was out at the property last week, and I took a number of photos that I included in your packets, some of the chapel itself, showing both the garage section and the chapel. Mr. Sudlow has started building the bathroom, handicapped accessible bathroom, and has a, and it has a small kind of kitchen area that he'll utilize for that also at some point in time. This property did have a little bit of history with, with this. Mr. Sudlow was cited in 2011 for the use of it as a chapel, but at the time, he was not, he was using it for family devotional services. And he, he basically, the termination was, as long as he's not advertising, he's not, not having anybody come to that place other than family members, there really wasn't anything that we could do about it, and, and we got, we did not, I don't believe we received any complaints on that. But in any case, so that was closed out. I'll forego reading any of the conditions tonight, but I will tell you, we have not had any comments from VDOT yet. We've requested comments. That's going to be kind of a critical part of this application, because the entrance does offer some challenges. I've provided some photos for you that Mr. Sudlow was kindly enough to allow me to take some, and he has mentioned that he will be willing to do anything necessary that VDOT would require to improve the safety of that entrance to his property. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any other questions. I will just mention that the property does currently have a septic system for five bedrooms and six occupants, but he wants to expand that septic system and, and to allow for this chapel and, and a guest house CUP, which will be in the next, the next CUP. Mr. Sudlow and his wife are here. Be glad to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anything, either of you like to add to this one?
I speak?
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Wesley and Mr. Perry, for the help you've given me so far. I've lived there for 22 years. My wife, Nita, and I, we have 10 children. We still have five at home. And in 2003, I built the garage, and as a workspace and garage. And then as time went on, I thought, we needed this more for our family, for a place of prayer. So, that's what we've been doing since 2003 there. And the purpose of this chapel, I call it a chapel because we are not planning to form a church congregation. My experience has been working interdenominationally with all types of churches across the board, and our purpose is, which was really brought on with this year of unrest, anarchy, and lawlessness in our country, that, and I have a lot of friends who feel the same way, that it's time for us to really look at why we are in the condition we're in, and that we have left the Lord and His principles, and that's why we're in trouble. And we know that history teaches us that there's, the way back is always through prayer and repentance. And so, our goal is, is to hold inter-denominational meetings with the emphasis of, if my people who are called by my name shall turn from their wicked ways and come back to me. And so that's the goal. And we do not plan to take the place of any local church. We're not planning to have any church services on Sundays, or any other historical time that churches meet for services. We have our own congregation for those things, but to work interdenominationally. This property, I feel, is very well-suited for this. Mr. Wesley mentioned, sorry, Wendley, mentioned the VDOT, we're very aware of that. We are co-owners of the property right next to us, and we have access through her driveway too, so we actually have two entrances. And as I, as he also said, we are willing to do whatever's needed to bring this to pass. So it's, it's pretty straightforward. We are very lucky that the properties surrounding us are very much covered with forest and, great buffering because of elevation and things like that. We have basically a cattle ranch across the street, and right next to us, right behind the chapel and barn, there are raising cows there. And then the southern property that borders us, that's about nine acres, the dwelling is way up at the top of it, it's an oblong goes up, so there, we're buffered there by forest as well. So that's our, our application in a nutshell, that we feel this is something that the time has come for it. Many people in our time don't even go to church any longer because of how much we all have failed the Lord in, in being the, you know, the church. So that's it. Any questions?
Not at this time. There, if we do, we'll, we'll ask you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's pretty much ordered me, with you guys.
Do you think VDOT will be back by next meeting?
We certainly hope so, yes. Taryn?
Oh, yeah. The gentleman who reviews our applications has been out of the country, or out of, yeah, the country for two weeks, so, he's back, so I think that, we've been bothering him a lot with the lost stuff, so. So we'll get them.
Yeah. Thank you.
In that, in looking at the map, the blue lines, the one that's provided in our packet, it appears that the only entrance to his property actually goes through the address 6443. Is that correct? Because that's also what I got on Google Maps.
Yeah. Okay, so if you look at the nine pictures that I included on the one, the one sheet with photos.
Yep.
You will see the two, well, I actually took three photos of the entrance, okay? The one photo on the right side in the middle is the actual entrance to Mr. Sudlow's, okay?
Right.
And if you look at where the one in the lower-left corner, where the American flag is, that's the adjacent property entrance, but they have that gravel driveway that connects both, okay? And that's what Mr. Sudlow alluded to as far as having permission to, to use that entrance to cut over to his entrance. And then also, I took a photo of, in the lower-right corner, kind of showing that, where that, that gravel driveway ties into Mr. Sudlow's in the, kind of the stormwater area there at the, at Mr. Sudlow's entrance, okay? And his house is, is well up the driveway from that. So, yeah, there, you know, there is two entrances, but they're not very, not really wide, and I, I think, I don't know how VDOT, what VDOT's going to feel about that, okay?
Well, my, my concern is, yes, I see both of those entrances, and... And on the property map, we have, it actually shows both those entrances and his driveway all the way past that house. It's a common driveway easement. It appears that you may have an easement. Because you truly.
Right, right.
I have a right of way. The house is my aunt's, but I'm a co-owner of it. She's 93 years old.
Yeah.
And so, yeah. We can't, we don't want to join the properties together. At one time, they were subdivided. It was one property. And then in 1988, it was subdivided and became two properties. My house was built by a man who owned it at that time.
So, yeah, there's a comment, it's a common driveway that that access is.
And given that even though he's a co-owner, are you majority owner or minority owner?
I guess I'd be minority as long as she's alive.
Since this is going to be for religious purposes, does he need an easement right? Access rights easement?
We have an easement. There is an easement on the deed already.
Okay. From what we got here, we don't realize that. Okay.
Okay, anything else? Can I make a motion?
I move that the planning commission authorize the proposed condition use permit request for advertisement for the public.
For the public hearing. Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. It'll be forwarded, we'll be seeing you in a month on that one. Our final authorization to advertise, David Nina Sudlow, again. Request for conditional use permit for a guest house. Property is located on 6435 Strasburg Road, identified on tax map nine as lot 48C1. Property is owned agricultural, located in the Fork Magisterial District. Mr. Wendling, again.
Okay, yes. Mr. Sudlow has renovated a small horse barn as an office and workshop. He did pull permits to do that. What he'd like to do is include that, create an additional bedroom in this structure in order for family and friends to stay at this property. It would be a non-commercial dwelling. You know, we're not talking short-term tourist run or anything. It's primarily for visits by family and friends. In 2013, they were approved for a building permit for 59, 2013, to add a second floor attic and roof to be installed, which has been done. Permit was issued, and it received its final inspection according to the building inspections department records. Structure currently does have an outstanding electrical permit, and I believe we'll need a plumbing permit. He's going to put a bathroom in there also. The soil work that they had done for the septic system that he wants to use for both the chapel and this small, basically effectively one-bedroom accessory dwelling, that's kind of won't hold until he gets through the zoning process for these short-term tours, for the, excuse me, the chapel. And, but in any case, I mean, basically, I've submitted some photos of the structure to you, kind of showing both front and back of it. Mr. Sudlow was kind enough to give me a kind of a tour of it. And right now, it's kind of midway between construction. He's just, basically, all he's got to do is mostly just cosmetic and some of his plumbing and electrical, I think. So if you have any questions, be glad to answer.
Okay, thank you. Anybody got anything?
Mr. Wendling, to issue the permit on this, it will have to come in full compliance with building code and all that stuff that'll have to be.
Absolutely, yeah. I would say probably that's what we're going to be looking at. We'll make sure that it meets the building inspections requirements, which will be a condition. It's a condition on the permit, health department requirements. And we'll also make sure the building code requirements for smoke and fire detector system. You know, you want to make sure that that's in there. One of the things that we have done in the past, I'll just, a little history with some of these, is with guest houses in order for the next person to know that, yes, indeed, it's a guest house for non-commercial. We can put it on the deed, and I believe maybe there might be an affidavit or something like that that could be done also and recorded just so that that next property owner, if the property were to transfer, would know that that was a guest house, an approved guest house for non-commercial purposes. So, and that will be a condition. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Anybody got anything else? Okay, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning commission authorize the proposed conditional use permit for a request for advertisement for a public hearing.
I'll second. Second, okay. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. It's be forwarded on to, we'll see you next month for a public hearing on it. That's all that. Our next item is commission member concerns. Anything, Mr. Longo?
Nope.
Mr. Kirksey? Okay. I've got two. First one is wish Cindy nothing but all the best and happy and safe retirement.
Absolutely.
Second one, my turn to get on the soapbox a little bit. And this is talking about the intersection of John Marshall Highway and High Knob Road. Please don't quote me on this number, but I think in the past 12 months, I've seen four wrecks out there. And the problem is simple. I'm also on the Board of Zoning Appeals, and I went up to look at a property in High Knob last week. And when you come out from High Knob Road, the guardrail blocks your line of sight. You can't see what's coming unless you're about halfway into the eastbound lane on John Marshall Highway. And I know we've done some things out there. We've put up the recommended speed limits of 45. We've put the stop bars across the road on each side to act as like miniature speed bumps. And even have flashing caution lights on the westbound lane coming on top of the hill there. But it's obviously not working. We need a signal. And if you're waiting for VDOT improvements for that to happen, I had someone from VDOT a long time ago tell me that from concept to groundbreaking is an average of 10 years. The time they go through the designs, the redesigns, the public hearings, the environmental impact statements, buy, you know, land right-of-way acquisition, purchasing the property, it's 10 years. And if you'll look at some of the projects we've had, it's taken them about that long. But we need to do something on that before somebody has a serious injury. And I'm off the soapbox now, thank you. Mr. Henry?
Nothing new, but I will agree with you on High Knob things. I've done a lot of work in and out of there. I think coming into town, it should have been a center turning lane. And I think headed out of town, High Knob, it should have had some turning lanes. If you come over the hill, you know, and somebody stopped to turn, if it had that center turning lane, the traffic would be allowed to go around it. Because that's usually the collisions that I see. And I've, I don't even go out there, and it's plenty of wrecks. So I couldn't agree more.
And the problem coming out of High Knob too, is the low area and you're pulling up. If you're in a truck, you might be able to see, but you're in a car. It's a problem. That's how I was going to get off of it. Ms. Beal, you got anything?
No, not this time.
Okay. Ms. Logan, I don't know what you've got coming, but what else?
Well, I'll just mention, I handled the smart scale applications to VDOT this year since Mr. Childress left the county. And we did submit a smart scale application for the High Knob entrance. And that's, of course, to VDOT for their fiscal year 2022 application process. But, and it was for right and left-hand turn lanes into the entrance. VDOT does score off of economic development highly on those applications. So we tried to, you know, put as much information as we could in about the economic development in that area. So we'll just have to see how it scores. But we did submit an application for right and left-hand turn lanes, so fingers crossed. But still, it will be a long process because, you're right, the VDOT projects are a long process a lot of times, but we're trying.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
I do, I do definitely want to say, Cindy, her last meeting, and I didn't know that her last meeting was going to be her last meeting. I would have mentioned it then, but she did unfortunately leave our department to enjoy her retirement and focus on her, she has an independent business. So we wish her the best of luck, and we really miss her. And our workload has, we're doing our best right now. So we're just going, we're trying to fill that position as quickly as we can. So just bear with us with your packets. We got them together, and we got them out on time, but hopefully, we can just, we'll keep doing our best. Thank you.
Anything, Caitlin?
I don't have anything.
Thank you. Mr. Petty and/or Wendling?
I just also wanted to follow up on Ms. Logan's just recent comments on the smart scale. I pulled it up on the VDOT smart scale website. It does list that specific project at the High Knob, so you can go on there and look through some of those details as well. And it has timetables and budgets and things. So you can kind of follow it along with that, as long as Ms. Logan's updates as well. You did mention, Mr. Chairman, mentioned, we did have a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting this month for a variance in the High Knob subdivision, which was approved. We are still steadily seeing a lot of permits come in right now. The builders and, you know, the homeowners are doing a lot of work, and so we're getting a lot of permits. And I think it's taking building inspections. I think they're telling people, you know, 14 to 21 business days to get through some of these permits because we've seen a lot. We've seen recent permits for the final phase of Blue Ridge Shadows as well. Those permits have come in to finish that last section. And again, a lot of homeowner and contractor work right now. But it's been good, and, you know, we're holding it down while Cindy's out. If you know anybody looking for a position, let us know. But that's all I have for now. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I have no comments this evening.
Okay. All right. Having that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn if anyone wants to go home tonight.
I move.
Got a second? Don't discuss. We're adjourned. Thank you, guys.